Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 10th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Dearborn Board of Education. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dambrojo. Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Thor. Trustee Watts here. President McDonald.
Here.
Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Mike Asaley, Executive Director of Special Populations, will introduce students that will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Thank you very much, President McDonald, Trustee Superintendent Maleko. It gives me great pleasure to introduce some of our amazing students today who are going to be leading the pledge. We have Michael Shammy from Whitmore Bowles Elementary with his sister Cosette. We also have Mr. Kareem Cave from O.L. Smith. We have Jonah Mahouski from Nalden Elementary. And then we have Rami Bazey from Carter Elementary with his sister Leila as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Mike, please bring them up. I have a certificate for them.
Watch your step. Come on.
She wants to give you something to hang on your refrigerator.
Thank you very much. Well done, Michael. Great job.
Great job. We've started the meeting. It's okay.
Thank you, students. Well done. Please don't block the podium access, young men. Can you move over a little? Thank you. Now I'm going to start by reading a statement this evening. I want to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us this evening. We are all here because we care about students and their education. We have heard concerns of our parents and the community at previous board meetings and through other lines of communication. Some are concerned about the age appropriateness of reading materials in our school libraries, while others are concerned about the censorship of information available to students. This shows that we are a caring and diverse community with a variety of opinions. Each parent or guardian has the right to determine the appropriateness of library resources for their children, but they also must afford that same right to other families. To that end, I want to commend the great work of Dr. Grover and Mr. Martin in spearheading the team of dedicated media specialists and administrators who have worked diligently to revamp the district's outdated book review process. Details of this new process were released this past week and will be presented this evening. Although balancing the rights of all families is challenging, our students will be successful and prepared to enter adulthood with confidence if they are provided the proper instructional tools that give them the opportunity to become critical thinkers. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Superintendent's Update.
Good evening, Board, members of the audience, those at home. I want to, I'm going to go down my, just going to go through my commentary. I'm going to start with agenda items. Wanted to congratulate, as we always do, our retirees, and I send letters to them. We have George Gilbo, 36 years of service, and Cheryl Johnson, over 21 years of service. If we can show our appreciation, we thank them and we congratulate them for their years of service. I also want to mention, I know the students did a great job with the pledge. On the agenda, it is National Disability Month, and Mr. Asaley does have a presentation coming up during the special report section. Going down to non-agenda items, I want to congratulate Trustee Watts on her appointment to the Early Childhood Investment Corp. I know there was a press release from the college, and we sent it out, and congratulations for that appointment by the governor. I am going to now introduce Mr. Ibrahim, or Abe Deklala, who was appointed last month as our Assistant Supervisor for Safety and Security, working with Ms. El Zayat and with Mr. Andrews. I'll let him come up to the podium and say a few words, and that way the Board knows he's going to be here at all the meetings, helping with the controlling and then, you know, providing security throughout our schools to make sure that students and staff are safe in every building.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Thank you, Board members, for this great opportunity.
Speak into the mic. Speak into the mic.
I apologize. Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Thank you, Board members, for this opportunity. As Dr. Maleko already introduced me, my name is Abraham Deklala, born and raised in Dearborn. I love it here. Attended McDonald Elementary, Lorry Middle School, Woodworth, Fortson. Went on to graduate from U of M Dearborn, where I met my wife. Been married 12 years. After U of M, I worked for the state, managed youth homes, took in kids who were abused and neglected by their families.
Just keep going.
I apologize. Took in kids who were abused and neglected by their families, had criminal behavioral disorders, as well as severe mental health disorders as well. All throughout college, I worked at the 19th District Court, where I gained some valuable experience. After my stint with the state, I spent eight years with the Dearborn Police Department, where I was happy to learn and grow as a professional, and that brought me here today. So I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity, and hopefully many good years to come.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, Mr. Deklala. I know President McDonald and I were also, we tend to talk a lot, as both President and Superintendent. We talked about National School Lunch Week, and how important that is, that our students are eating nutritious meals. Feel very positive that we, on a daily basis, serve approximately 14,000 students. I want to thank our entire food service staff, Mr. Murphy, our partnership with SFE, and the great work that all of our kitchen staff do every day to ensure that our students are, come to school and they have proper nutrition. So if we could show our appreciation to them, I appreciate that. I want to comment on, you know, the press release that we had that went out. We were trying to put information out. I want to mention that, you know, we were attempting to be proactive. We started hearing some concerns as far as different materials and books. In the spring, our team started working on it. There's always been a process in place, but we knew that we needed to revamp it when we started hearing from different parents. We were talking to parents, listening to concerns. We always do that. That's what we always do. We decided that we need to really look at that process, and I want to, you know, thank Dr. Grover and Mr. Martin. The executive cabinet was involved, but really the two of them took the, took the lead on it. And I know that they had other staff involved, others, media specialists, teachers, other administrators, and it went through a very thorough process. We want to make sure that, you know, we have a system in place that is fair to all. I think that's very important. I also want to mention that the books that have been in question, I think there's, have been at the high school level. There hasn't been any question at the elementary that we're aware of, and I just wanted to clarify that. I know there's a lot of information going on in social media, and that's why we tried to put out our process last week. You know, my time in the district, spanning now almost 27 years, I think we have a track record with this Board of Education of working in the best interests of all, to ensure that our students receive a high-quality education. We also know we need to listen to the parents, and that's why we came up with this process. I want to stress, too, that parents have the right to opt out their own child. And any parent can opt out their own child of the books or materials. However, other parents may want certain materials, and so we want to respect the rights of all parents when we're making these decisions. There is a form online that can be used that went out, and I just want to mention as well that, you know, our schools will continue to be welcoming safe places. Our media centers will reflect books on different topics. We will, we will go through a massive review process. Understand that, I said I've been here 27 years. I mean, this book collection has started over many, many years. We have over a half a million books, just the physical books, and then, you know, electronics. So it is a monumental task, but we understand, we're listening to all. And that's why I do want to call up now, if we can see where they are. You're going to have to make some room. Mr. Martin and Dr. Grover, and I, they're probably over to the side, so we're going to have to make some room to allow them to come up to the podium right now and talk about the process that we outlaid in our, oh, there they come, through our press release. And I can tell you, they've been working very hard. And again, we're going to stand by the process. We think the process is fair. And again, parents have individual rights, so.
Can I get you to turn up the podium, Mike?
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Dr. Maleko, President McDonald, trustees, thank you again. I'm going to do a quick clarification and then turn it over to Dr. Grover. As Dr. Maleko said, she's been working hand-in-hand with media specialists, revisiting a process and a policy that had already been in existence and is aligned really to the American Libraries Association guidance in terms of, what is that process, right? A couple things. I know there has been some misunderstanding of Dearborn City Libraries versus Dearborn Public School Library Libraries. As much as Dr. Maleko might want to be the mayor, I don't think that's his role, and the same with Mayor Hamud. So they are two distinct, separate entities. We do work with the Dearborn City Libraries in terms of trying to support students having access, but we govern our libraries and our media centers separately from them. The other thing is, as we got with the media specialist and Dr. Grover and started talking about, what is our standard for books that are in our media centers and our resources, absolutely, we want to make sure that what is in there is appropriate for all of our students. So in the process that went out to everyone, there was a bolded section that I want to read to make sure that everybody knows kind of where we're at. So it says, "Dearborn Public Schools believes that media materials containing graphic and/or gratuitous violent sexual conduct, content, sorry, expletives or hate speech, and without literary or educational merit, should not be included in our media centers." We do not want this material in our media centers. So we're very, we're very... I appreciate, I appreciate all the noise, right? But the goal is to make sure that what we have in our, in our media centers is appropriate for all of our students. And as Dr. Maleko said, parents have the right to limit their children's ability to check things out. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Grover, who can kind of talk through the four big rocks of the, the process, and then we can ask, answer some questions from there. Dr. Grover?
Okay, before Dr. Grover gets started, please keep your voices down so everyone can hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, President McDonald, and Dr. Maleko. There are really four big pieces of what we've been revising and refreshing. It has existed for many, many years, but we have gone through it completely. The four big pieces, and I'll go through them each briefly, they're all contained in the document that was linked in the press release that went out last week. So we have a process to determine the selection of our media materials moving forward. That same selection process also governs what is called weeding, which is reviewing all of the books in the media centers to make sure that they meet our, our standards and our age-appropriate ranges. We also have a book challenge procedure and a book reconsideration procedure. So the first part of the selection process, you can see it on the screen, is really just to govern the selection and to aid the media specialists as they select materials for the media centers. Media centers and libraries, those are the same terms. We happen to use media center in our district. We really want to have a well-balanced and broad collection of materials for information and reference and research for our students. We also want to foster a lifelong love of learning, and we want students to see books as a way to explore other worlds, to explore other, other things, and to really develop that enjoyment of reading as a pastime. So when we select materials for our, our media centers, you can see on the screen the things that we are looking for. We have spent a great bit, great deal of time on the last bullet, which is age-appropriate. So you can see that defined here on the screen. Elementary is defined as grades pre-K through 5, or ages 0 through 10. Middle school is defined as grades 6 through 8, or ages 10 to 13. And high school is defined as grades 9 through 12, ages 13 to 17. So as I said, the weeding process, which is really going through the existing collection, will also follow these same selection guidelines. So when we are selecting materials or weeding materials, we look at the publisher recommendation for the grade or age ranges. And again, that's the same grade ranges that you saw on the last screen. And every book that is published has a publisher's recommended age range. We also don't just take the publisher's recommendation. We look for at least two reviews supporting that. We actually look for many more of these six sources, which are nationally published, well-respected journals, that look at everything that is published and give it a review. So we have to find two that support that publisher grade range. So if we find the sites, if some of those sites show disagreement, the media specialists meet at either the elementary or the secondary level to actually look at the materials themselves, look at all of the reviews, actually handle the book if necessary, and then they vote. We have 14 media specialists. There are seven members of the elementary committee and seven members of the secondary committee. There are also some books that are generally classics, some science fiction, some things like that, that are published as adult books. Tom Clancy novels is one of them. To Kill a Mockingbird is another. Those books must actually be reviewed by looking through the book before they could remain on our shelves. I just want to repeat what both Dr. Maleko and Mr. Martin already said. Parents can opt their, their children out of any or all media materials. There is a form that's readily available through the parent portal on the district website that, that parents will fill out, and then that gets transmitted to our media specialists, who then will make sure that that restriction is flagged in the student's Destiny account. Destiny is the online library management system. Mr. Martin already read this statement, that this is our standard when we are either purchasing or reviewing books. And then should a parent think that we have not met that standard and find a material that they don't think meets that standard, that is the book challenge process. That process starts at the local level, at the school level. So a parent, a staff member, or a student who have a question or concern about any media material can either go to the school media center or the administrator of that school. The media specialist at that school then gathers information about that book, including going back to the publisher's recommendation, as well as at least two journals supporting it or disagree with it. And then they meet with this elementary or secondary committee to talk about the book, to discuss the book, and they actually vote on whether that's an age-appropriate book. Or media material. I keep saying book, but this applies to any media material. After that, a meeting is scheduled with the parent and the media specialist and the administrator to discuss the outcome of that book review process that has taken place with seven of the district media, media specialists. Again, each parent has the right to opt their child out at any point. If a parent still feels like that has not been adequately addressed after the meeting, then it goes into a book challenge procedure. After that, it goes to, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the slide because I'm looking for the book consideration. Oh, here we are. So at the meeting, the parent is given the option of filing a book reconsideration form. And so what that does is it takes that work in question, along with all of its history, to a committee, and you can see the, it has nine members. Three parents are community members, three teachers are media specialists, one administrator, one school social worker or school psychologist, and one student. So that book reconsideration committee would be given copies of the material. They do agree to read the entire book, because we are looking at the educational or literary merit of the entire work. And then they schedule a meeting to, to discuss the book, and then vote on the outcome of what happens to that book. There's the initial meeting to discuss the process. There's minutes kept. They read the whole book. They could bring in an outside expertise, an outside expert. And then they make the decision about what happens to the book. A written report is shared with Dr. Maleko, the school administrator, and the media specialist. And then if it, the decision is to remove the book, it's shared with all administrators and media specialists and teachers in the district. I want to reiterate that we have not banned any books in Dearborn. I think that's an important point. We did temporarily remove the six books from the shelves only, from circulation. They're still in the media centers, while we refresh this process. While we go through this process with any subsequent books, we would not remove the books from the shelves while all of this is going on. If they were to be removed, though, they would be on a do-not-purchase list, and we would hold that decision for at least five years before it is reconsidered.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Trustee Barry.
I don't have a question. Just a couple comments. As a parent of two young ladies at the high school level, and a grandfather of four young ones in elementary and middle school, the way I understand opt-out or opt-in processes is, is a way to empower parents in which way they want to parent. I'm an old man, so back when I was in school, at Salina, when there was co-ed swimming, and somebody didn't want their daughter swimming with the boys, it was a mechanism. I don't know if it was opt-out or opt-in, but also, back then, there were school dances on Wednesday nights, and some parents didn't want their daughters or sons attend those, and they opted out. Fast forward, it was one of the sexual, sex education classes. So that opt-out is a way to give parents control without breaking any laws. You know, as a district, we get funds from the federal government. We get funds from the state. We get funds from many, many sources. So there are laws on the books that determine what we can and we can't do, but every single time, there's an issue that comes up, we find a way to empower our parents, and I know that. And Faisal, I don't know if you're here or you're watching, I just want to thank you for your trust. I had somebody do some research, and back in 1972, repeat that, 1972, that's the year I came to this country. Speaking of books, I didn't read English back then, but that's the year that we actually had a Dearborn Book Challenge Policy. And I have that in front of me here. So somebody questioned me if this has been around. Yes, it's been around for a long, long time. It needed to be updated, because, you know, what the, what the parents want today compared to 50 years ago is a little different. So I'm kind of, I took what we, what you did, and great job, by the way, on that. I took what you did and shared it with many, many community members that were very, very, how do I say to keeping it clean? They, they weren't too happy, but when they saw what we did, they're like, yeah, we can live with this. It's not going to make everybody happy, but we can't break any laws by trying to make everybody happy. We have to, we have to agree to that. But the po-
We need to hear from Mr. Barry. Continue, please. Keep it down.
I think the policy that we put in place will serve us well, and if we have to adjust it, make changes, we're willing to listen. We're willing to listen to our staff. We're willing to listen to our parents, and we'll go from there. I just wanted to say, great job, Dr. Grover.
Trustee Addle, or Trustee Menzel, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to Mr. Martin and Dr. Grover for this presentation. I know this school district has been working with parents all around, and librarians to offer excellent educational experiences to our students. When there are concerns that are raised from parents, this board and this administration has, have been attentive. As a student of Fortson High School, from 2000 to 2004, I appreciate all of the library staff who have helped me during my research, whether it was on the country of Pakistan or Lewis Querrell story and novels as an ESL student, and my curiosity on scientific books. Our school libraries offer so much to our students, and I'm grateful to these institutions for educating myself, and now my kids, and yours. I'm probably the most critical board member that you would find on this board, but this administration has handled this issue with care and cooperation. The current process of ruling inappropriate books, and that comes in, in place from our libraries, has been there for many, many years, as Trustee Barry has mentioned. Now, as evident from our last meeting, we did have a former librarian who was here and, and spoke to us about, sometimes themselves, exercising their true discretion of returning some, some books. And per the Michigan State Code, Dearborn Public Libraries believe that media materials that might contain graphic and/or violent sexual content, explicit or hate speech, without literary or educational merit, should not be included in our schools. Now, there are some books that might have fallen through the cracks, and that's why there is this challenge process. This is not a book banning, as unfortunately some media has painted it. This is making sure that sexual and explicit content that is vulgar is prohibited per our policy. I support this administration in categorizing library materials and making them appropriate for our students. However, during all of these conversations, our librarians and educators have been attacked by some of members of the public and labeled as sexual predators and groomers. This is insulting and disrespectful and liable. This is... This is a serious accusation and undermines our educators and librarians. I agree with my colleague, Trustee Barry, and all of you, that parents have a choice and they have a voice, and this administration have given you that voice. Thank you. Thank you.
That is, that is not necessary. We understand that people have differing opinions. We will conduct ourselves as adults. We will not boo, we will not jeer. You can clap if you'd like, and you'll listen to the speaker.
I just want to remind everyone, there are young children here watching your behavior. Please, please be courteous and respectful of each other's opinions.
You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor. Trustee Watts?
Dr. Grober, could you explain what was the process before this? And you said it was on the books since 1972, and I don't mean to go all the way back to 1972, but in the most recent, what was the process if a parent said, hey, maybe this book is not necessarily something that I want my child to read? So what would they, what would it have looked like as of a couple of weeks ago?
So it looked a lot like this. I would have to say that what we did was tightened up the definitions of age-appropriate and also formalized the opt-out process. Our media specialists have been allowing parents to opt students out informally, just by sending a note or having a conversation at the school. So we have formalized this process. But we also have a very specific definition now of age appropriateness, and then the need to go not only with the publisher's recommended age group, but then also at least two supporting recommendations or reviews from those six journals. But the book reconsideration process was taken from the American Library Association, and so it looked a lot like this.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Petrikov?
No, I, I would just like to make a statement for everyone here. I was going to hold this till after, but I just want you to understand, from the beginning when a parent came with a book challenge earlier this year, we have been proactive with this parent. This parent even came to the board meeting in August and thanked Dr. Maleko for the efforts he had been putting forward to respect the concerns. We have never, ever turned a blind eye to the issue when it was brought before the board. We have always been proactive and responsive and receptive to all of our parents and the rest of the community that we represent. There is a process, and it's one that is to be balancing all of those competing challenges within this community. And I would like to remind everyone, one of the biggest values that we have always talked about in this community is about our diversity. And yet, all of a sudden, this diversity has drawn a line in the sand, and it's us versus them, and nobody is respecting that diversity anymore because they've decided to choose a side, and they aren't going to be representing the collective community anymore. And I find that disheartening, that we've come to this point at this part of the year when everyone should be finding ways to dialogue with each other. And this district, its employees, its staff, Dr. Maleko, has done nothing but to be proactive and representative of all of the concerns, and we've tried very hard to balance those needs that everyone has in order to, that everyone has the opportunity to be represented here in this community. And that's what our role is.
Well stated. Continue.
Okay, I have one more topic, if Ms. Farage can make her way. Thank you, Dr. Grover and Mr. Martin.
I just wanted to say one thing, and that was, I want to thank the district media specialists. There are 14 of them, and they have worked hard on this. We've had lots of meetings, we've had lots of discussions, and I just want to publicly thank them for all of their work.
Absolutely. The board thanks them as well.
Surprisingly enough, today is International School Library Day, just for all our librarians to let you know thank you.
And I saw that firsthand when I attended your meeting briefly on Friday. Thank you, Dr. Grover and media specialists.
Agreed. Thank you so much.
So this next, Ms. Farage is going to come up, and this is required under the ESER federal law that we have to have, we know we're coming out of, you know, numbers with COVID, but we still have to have a plan, so she needs to publicly present this, and we'll turn it over to her and take questions if anyone has. And I believe this will go, the plan goes out on the website after the board.
Good evening, everyone. So this is about section 98(c) of Public Act 144. This is another funding source that the district is receiving. And to be eligible for this fund, it is required that we present the information about the plan that we've developed in this board meeting in October. So the requirement of the fund is that all districts who wish to receive the funds, we need to develop and make publicly available a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services. This should address the learning loss for all students lagging, lagging in academic progress. It also includes health and safety. We know even though that the COVID numbers are decreasing, we're seeing less COVID numbers, we still have to have safety measures in order to make in-person instruction healthy and safe for students. It should address the academic, social, emotional, and other needs such as mental health. It focuses on acceleration of learning, meaning that we need to have equity for all students in terms of having accessibility to essential standards at grade level, and it needs to be aligned to and measured by a benchmark assessment and correlate with COVID-19 learning plans that we've had in the past, as well as each one of our school improvement plans. Other requirements include that we present this information. It is a lengthy plan that's going to be posted on the website as of five minutes from now, and it must be presented to the community at a public board meeting. And if you click on a link that looks like the clip art in the photo up here, it will take you to the plan. We need to present the progress on the plan in April and in September. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Farage, for always being on top of those rules to ensure that we use our funding for the safety and the education of students. Appreciate it, and your team.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
I'm a Dearborn High School senior, and I have your commendations. So first, I have the district commendations for the food service director, Jeff Murphy, who was recently part of webinar panel on understanding cultural foodways in school communities. The event was organized by, by the Institute of Children Nutrition to look at how a community's religious and cultural preferences impact the school's menus and strategies for outreach to understand community needs. Commercations to a human resources director, Nada Alamandi, I'm sorry, that's the name of, for her article, "HR Meeting: The Challenge of Workforce Shortages," featured in the October School Business Affairs publication. Thank you to Ms. Alamandian for her consistent commitment to the HR department and to the district. Now on to middle school. Commendations to the transportation staff for supporting Salina Intermediate. The staff wanted to recognize Anna Lutin, Janine Nash, and Andre Price, and Dennis Dombrowski, and noted that the parents and students have nothing but praise for the crew. Also, the elementary commendations to Oakland Elementary Principal Mahmoud Abu Ros, who was named an ex, ex, sorry, exceptional educator by the WXYZ TV Channel 7, and Jurex Papa's trial attorneys. Mr. Abu Ros was presented the award of a $1,000 check for Oakland Elementary at the school's late, late last month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mira. Well done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next, acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening. A grant of $10,000 has been offered to Snow Elementary School by a national philanthropic trust to be used for the garden project. A donation of $360 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the My Community Cares to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. A donation of 16 cases of gloves, 60 cases of hand sanitizer, 18 cases of hand soap, and 16 cases of disinfectant wipes has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Rama Worldwide to be used at the classrooms at McDonald's Elementary. A donation of two pallets of hand sanitizer has been offered to Dearborn Public School by Zom Trucking to be distributed throughout the district. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, staff recognition, counselors.
If our counselors that are here can please try to make your way towards the front. Kasim Darwish from Dearborn High, Mona Mahadli from Fortson, Helen Hamad from Etzel Ford, and Carrie Bazey from Henry Ford Early College. A counselor is a patient, a patient empathetic and resourceful professional, also a multitasking star, helping students with their goals and challenges, collaborating with teachers, administrators, and families to develop and implement plans for diverse learners, advocating for students fostering resilience and fostering hope. Your flexibility and your understanding of the whole child is recognized and greatly valued, not to mention the challenges you overcome while navigating all the complexities of the high school offerings and the high school scheduling. Dear counselors, thank you for your hearts being full of love, your ears willing to listen, and your hands ready to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could hold on just a moment, Dr. Maleko's going to come out and get a photograph with you.
Kasim, thank you.
Next, the staff appreciation drawing.
We have six winners this month, and they are as follows. Doha Albustani, she's a cook manager at Howard Elementary. Thank you, Doha. Hayet Talib is a paraprofessional at Miller Elementary. Ernie DeSantis is a teacher at Snow Elementary. Miriam Hogege is a teacher at Stout Middle School. Joel Blake is a teacher at Bryant Middle School. And our $100 winner is Lois Cotts, a custodian at Maples Elementary. I'd like to read just one of the nominations. This is for Hayet Talib. She's the paraprofessional at Miller.
Everyone, bring your voices down. You do not have the floor. Be kind and listen to our speaker.
I would like to nominate my parapole, Hayet Talib. She goes above and beyond every single day. She is assigned to one student, but anyone that walks in the room would never know who her student is because she helps everyone that needs it without hesitation or without being asked. She helps me prep materials for the kids and manages reading groups. She brings in decorations for the classroom to make it festive and makes treat bags for the kids out of the goodness of her heart. She takes extra time each day to clean the classroom by wiping down desks, countertops, and door handles. She truly goes above and beyond to make school a fun, exciting, and safe place for all of us to be. Thank you, Hayet.
Thank you.
Next, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Policy Committee meeting, September 12, 2022. Board Report 22 hyphen 37. Building and Site Committee meeting, September 12, 2022. Board Report 22 hyphen 38. The regular P-12 meeting, September 12, 2022. Board Report 22 hyphen 39. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
Support. I have a moved by Trustee Barry and a supported by Trustee Mosav. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Oh, excuse me, yeah. One quick correction, sorry.
Yes, Trustee Mosav, or Trustee Barry.
Close enough. On page five, fifth paragraph down, actually, it's the last paragraph.
The general, the general minutes?
I'm sorry, yes, the general minutes. Thank you, Trustee Petrokov. It starts off saying, "Trustee Barry said." The second sentence says, "I want to make sure that our lawyer has been or will be involved in this process." Then it says, "Trustee Watts said, as this committee starts to form, we need legal hand to make sure we're not violating Supreme Court law." In between those two sentences, I also asked for an opinion from our lawyer, which I have received, but I just want the minutes to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Thank you.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio? Trustee Mosav?
Yes.
Trustee Petrokov?
Yeah.
Trustee Thor? Trustee Watts? Yes, President McDonald?